Are we on?
Rich was saying he's going along and it looks like-
Alive, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is July 19th. Please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda. There's no additions or corrections that I entertain a motion to approve.
Make motion that we approve the agenda for today.
Second.
Moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, our first item up on our agenda is, these are all action items, the meeting minutes of July 12th. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
I did. I did not see any corrections, so I've moved to approve the meeting minutes of July 12th.
I'll second that, even though I wasn't here.
Moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is the Board of Equalization meeting minutes of July 29th and July, June 29th and July 1st. And they look okay to me, so I'll make the motion we approve the BOE meeting minutes of June 29th and July 1st.
Second.
Moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our next agenda item is approval to submit the following grants. The first one is BGA-FY21 Body Warn Camera Policy and Implementation. Mary, come on up and explain this one to us.
So this is a grant through the Bureau of Justice for 30 body cameras and docking stations. The total cost is $100,000, so it requires 50% match from the Sheriff's Department. The little bit more about it, they get full camera replacement and docking stations at 30 months. It's a total, it's a total of five-year lease agreement.
So it's a one-
So all the storage and everything is part of this package? So there'd be nothing with IT? And we felt that it would kind of give IT a chance to get their storage, get up and running, because this program, they have, it's all cloud-based storage.
Is there an annual maintenance to it after we buy these things?
No.
Get these things?
No, there is not. $100,000 for five years for the entire program.
I know years past, the concern was IT didn't want to have to set up all the storage for that. So it sounds like that problem has been-
Right.
-solved-
Yeah.
For a while.
Yes.
Doug, where do you think the $50,000 is going to come from for the match?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we budgeted for that after a meeting with the Captain as well as Mary after it was identified there was a match requirement. We did include that in the budget that has been submitted to the Commissioners for review. So an additional $50,000, it has been captured and you can see it in the materials that were sent to you, I believe on Thursday.
What happens at the end of the five years? Do we apply for the grant again, or is that?
Yeah, you would have to, you know, renegotiate your lease. But yeah, they could, we could definitely apply for another grant.
Brian, have you had much involvement with body camera legislation and legalities and all that stuff?
Oh, but I've had experience with cloud-based storage. Talked through those concerns with the Sheriff, Eric going forward. Challenges with accessing the data after the fires. I placed me at the data of having ongoing criminal case or hurting something that we need. That data, Sheriff decides to go a different direction. They'll still have to have some sort of a actual arrangement for that data.
And that's 10 years?
Yeah, it depends. It could potentially be. Especially if there's an ongoing issue.
True.
That data just doesn't, doesn't get the beat. Permanent this.
And part of this funding is to be used to create a body camera policy for Valley County and working with the prosecuting office, prosecutor's office, and create our own policy which could have the retention information in there and maybe what Brian is talking about.
Since Jeremy's here, I want to ask him too. Do you remember, do we have to store this for 10 years by code?
I recall Tom.
Are you comfortable with this, going this direction?
I didn't, so I wasn't aware there was any of that.
Well, apparently part of the grant is storage in the cloud, and that was the issue in the past with David was here, is building all that storage for that much data. And I think that was a concern raised back then, but if it's going to the cloud, then we basically don't have anything to do with it.
Right.
Correct. All the company they're using is.
And it might be safe to say that if we get five or six years down the road and we decide that we want to end this program, we can end it?
Yes. Yeah, now about your, the data storage, I guess that's something that maybe we'd have to ask maker, whoever gets the bids for procurement for the cameras.
Well, it'd be if all of a sudden they started charging us heavily for that storage. That would be my concern. Dave, do you, Sergeant, do you know any, what they charge? Do you have, are you good with all this?
I am really good with that, I think. That's where they obviously make their money, which potentially add the storage and do it ourselves. For the provision, after the storage up, the guys, you know, like, help them have access.
Well, and in five years, maybe there'll be something more up to date or more, who knows where IT will be in five years.
Right.
A couple of these companies I've talked to and worked with this in the past have, actually for whatever reason, we decided we can't do this, or we have to. Open or whatever, most of them, it depends on your contract.
Okay.
That would mean we have to buy something, put it somewhere. If ever came like that, companies will give us that.
So what would that be, like a server? Okay, and they're not that expensive, so.
Our current connection speeds over at the jail and the office, do they allow for that much data to be transferred easily into the cloud? From the cameras? Oh, I was just asking if our current connections are adequate to cover that much data flow from the cameras being uploaded into the cloud every day, I presume?
Yes, every day.
Yeah, it seems like a lot, a lot of, a lot of data getting sent out.
It should be. We can, if this program gets up and running, how much that data is actually.
Just spend a lot of money on updates.
Right.
I mean, so there definitely should be.
Well, and I like that idea that, you know, we got five years to build that storage if we have to. Not like we got to do it tomorrow, so.
And I had already submitted the Idaho State Police grant for the body cameras, and we find out about that the end of August, but this was due before then, so we wanted to submit this also.
So I'll make the motion then that we authorize the submittal of the BGA-FY21 Body Warn Camera and implement, implementation program to support law enforcement in Valley County.
I'll second that.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, and you're going to do the next one too, Mary?
No, there was actually only one.
Approval of NAS Pro Agreement Dispatch?
Oh, I only had one.
Will you go there? Hey, thanks, Mary.
Hey Dave, while you're here though, I, Dave, this weekend I was approached by AT&amp;T, and they have a FirstNet Responders Program, just like you guys are talking about. Did you guys look into that also? You did, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I had to switch around. And round and test with a couple of phones they gave us, and her recovery doesn't work.
Okay.
So who do we have now, Verizon?
We're going to.
What Commissioner's talking about is FirstNet will bomb people off and give us priority on the city.
Oh, okay.
For us to do that, then benefit that. Or is it AT&amp;T now?
Let's see. Okay, if not, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next item is also an action item. This is approval of the NAS Pro Agreement for Dispatch for inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing. And I don't know who's bringing this one forward. Doug, do you?
I believe Captain.
Those are the, those are the Dispatch Move contracts forwarded to all the co-assigned cases.
So do you have those with us? Do we have something to sign today?
They were in our packet.
They were, yeah.
Oh, in the packet?
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
You know when Scott's going to get started over there? Have you guys been talking?
I have not talked. That's why I talked to him.
Captain, is the NAS Pro Agreement different than the H-JAC?
NAS Pro is for radios, and the H-GAC is for furniture.
And is the NAS Pro in our packet?
I'm looking, Mr. Chairman.
It's the inter-local. That says H-GAC too.
Well, that's the the furniture one. I don't see the one for the radios.
I don't see the one for the radios either.
Found the one for the fingerprint machine.
I don't have an NAS Pro.
Hey Captain, I don't know if we got the, do you know when you sent that one off? This place.
Dave, before you go, is, is this fingerprint machine in? Is the fingerprint, fingerprint machine already in? It says installation complete.
Something that Jeremy's going to be presenting on, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, so that's a separate item that I sent, okay.
Correct.
Sorry about that. There's a lot of stuff there. Did you find the?
I did.
Is it in the packet?
I'm emailing it to you right now.
Okay.
Apologies about that one.
Waiting for it to load.
I thought, I think we saw this last time. We just didn't have it on for approval.
Yep. So I entertain a motion to approve both of those?
I move that we approve the H-GAC by interlock contracts and approve the NAS Pro Agreement Dispatch.
Second that.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? Other than I think this is great, we're finally getting this done? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
This is the third one that we got, the PADD.
Which one?
Oh, there's another one in the attachments that Doug just sent. That was PADD.
Another one to do? PADD 16?
I looked at that. Hit that one, Doug?
Yeah, I forwarded that email that you sent to me on Monday. Do all of them, and I agree with you, I do not see anywhere where.
I didn't see any.
It's strange though, it's dated the 18, or 2018, the one that we have. People that signed it, one of them is from Kenwood and the other one is State of Washington. I'm just-
Those were, that was like, is that for the H-GAC or for the NAS Pro?
Uh, it doesn't say. It says PADD. It's a-
NASPO Value Point.
Participating Addendum.
That's the only one I don't have, the NAS one. Well, I'm just wondering, Dave, if we should go back and try and figure out a way to print a blank signature page, because it does have one, like Dave said, it's-
On the PADD?
Yeah. It's on, um, it says 100 of, page 100 of 122 pages.
I would want to know what that is.
I don't, I don't want to sign that.
That's a million 625,000.
Right, and it's a contract that was dated from 2018 to State of Washington.
This is somebody else's contract.
About what this is.
Yep.
I think this was just for equipment that they in fact had purchased.
What page was that figure on?
Right at the very top.
I think it's just an example.
Yeah, this is not, we can't do this one. So Doug, can we delay this one until next week?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that that, that additional item, that was just, I think as the Captain indicated, just a, a reference to show what had been done in the past. But I, I want to get confirmation from him. I don't think that this has anything to do with-
That was an example, that of, that's the contract everybody goes off of. They just use the Washington State as an example. My thing needs to be signed NASPO and the H-GAC. The other one was just an example of the contract. And that one is connected to NASPO.
Could we vote on that, Doug?
Yes.
So I don't have the NASPO.
I, Mr. Chairman, I just printed it off. My apologies.
Okay. So we will wait for that one to show up and sign that. Here's this one here. I think-
If you can, that'd be great. It's in the clerk's office.
Okay.
So we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next item is also an action item. This is Certificate of Final Acceptance for the Fingerprint Machine. Jeremy, you're doing this one?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
So as you know, there was a fingerprint machine purchased for Civil, where they could do their background fingerprint checks and their concealed weapons and such. It's been received, installed, and it's working. The way it was set up with the state and David previously was that now that we have it and it's working, we sign this acceptance, acceptance letter and they bill us for the amount. And then we send that to the state and the state will send us the funds to then pay that bill. So I just need the letter of acceptance signed that we, that we received it and we're happy with it, and then they can bill us, then I can send that bill to the state.
And then do we pay that annual maintenance every year?
They're going to pay the first one, and then going forward, that 1760 would be on us, yes.
So do we get that in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. So what's, what's your pleasure?
Move to accept the Certificate of Final Acceptance for the Fingerprint Machine.
I'll second that.
Moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you have it printed out? Nice.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know who signs the approved by. Probably Doug.
Um, yeah.
Dave, you guys are totally set up now, right? You've got cameras, you've got, I mean, you guys are pretty much-
Yes.
I guess what I'm asking is, we won't see any other large expenses coming?
This one's been working since, I should be fine since last year on body.
Okay.
Let me get this-
That's why this one came up.
Oh, yeah, I will.
Okay.
Go to scan first.
Okay, great. Make sure you guys are taking care of-
Okay.
But make sure you're taking care of.
Yep, Doug's going to scan them, get them in, then get them to you, and we're ready to go. Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is to approve branding guidelines. Pat?
Yep, that's me.
That's you?
Yep, Earth. Actually, it's not me. It is the Strategic Committee. And through our strategic plan, McKenzie came up, my brain is not working. McKenzie came up with our branding guidelines. And so with that, we need to have them approved so we can start using them. This should be in your packet. It looks like this. It says brand guidelines on it. And we're just asking for you to approve this. The beauty of this is it talks about, you know, which logos are appropriate, which aren't, how to do the, the letterhead and how to do business cards and stuff. So.
So Pat, with this, will McKenzie send out something, or will you send out something to all of the employees with the correct logo? And then are we going to have a central repository on who's going to order business cards? So we're all ordering the same format, other than the Sheriff's Office is going to order their own, but be as compliant as they can?
I think McKenzie said that she would design it. So we would have to work with McKenzie on the design. So she, because she has all the graphic arts stuff. So she would design the business cards and then I, you know, I suppose we, just so they look the same, it doesn't matter where we print them. I know Vista Print is cheap, but, and they do a good job, but you know, everybody can do it however it works best.
Pat, is this going to include a new one behind us here?
We need to get a new one behind us.
That is more refined?
Yes. I was just thinking about that this morning, and I've been, you know, on our computers, it has this one too. So I believe, wasn't it Ralph McKenzie that got that commissioned and up?
Um, way, way back when, the old one we had was really bad, and so we had a contest, and I can't remember the gal who-
No, I meant the, the sign. So it seems like that was part of facilities at that time.
Right, at that time, but it was, it was not as refined as we hoped it would be.
Right. Right.
I think that we could probably get McKenzie to find a printer.
Mm-hmm.
And redo that and just give her the-
It was on a foam board, wasn't it?
It is on a foam board.
Yeah.
Just have her order that one.
Yep, yep.
Hey, any more questions for Pat? It took me a long time to figure out why the drop shadow wasn't accepted, then I saw the gray. And I go, oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's pretty subtle. You have to look really close.
Does it look the same?
Yeah.
And then I think it's important, you know, that everything that we do, we make sure that we're doing this. This is going to be a tough transition for people because they're, they already have it on their computers, they're used to ordering from a specific place. So we just need to make sure that everything we see is this new information.
Well, I kind of hope that people will use up their old stuff before they order a bunch of new stuff, but we'll see how that goes.
Depends on if they have five years' worth, and we probably want them to replace it.
Yeah.
We want, we want one brand for Valley County, and that is important. Might be a slight expense, but.
Exactly.
And then as far as our business cards, you know, it's, I don't know how quickly people go through their business cards, but we may want to make sure.
My business card has the old, this one here where the river is black instead of blue.
Yeah.
And all of our emails, when we receive an email, make sure people are using the correct iteration of the star logo and-
I'll have McKenzie create the email and then I can send it out to everybody.
That's awesome.
Great.
With all the attachments and everything, so.
Okay, anything else?
No. I'll make the motion that we approve the branding guidelines as presented.
Second.
Nicely, nice job, Pat. Thanks for your help on this.
It wasn't me, but thank you.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Do we actually have color cards?
No, mine are black and white. They're the old, this one up here, with the rivers black. Not very refined. Okay, our next item is also an action item. This is- Hey, our next item is also an action item. This is discussion, decision on reorganization of the rec department. I don't know who's brought this one forward. Dave, is this you?
Uh, no.
So I think Pat had asked a question. Larry's requesting Danny go full-time. And we've been having a conversation about how busy Larry's department is and the vision for the future from the county. So this is an open conversation about when it's time to add an additional person to your department. And I would like to have that full conversation. So I don't know that it was me or if it was Pat or what, but... So, because Danny's working right now, three quarters or part-time, or what's Danny working?
Thirty hours is his max.
Thirty hours.
And he's willing to go full-time, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we budgeted for that?
I don't know if Doug had the conversation with you.
He hasn't.
It hasn't happened yet, no.
Okay. We got to make sure.
And, and I think we need to start having the conversation about when, when do we envision a broader department for the rec? Because right now, with the IDL transfer, everything that's going on with the Forest Service, all of our recreation base, I feel like you have to be more than at capacity because of, there's just so many people in the forest right now. There are things that need to be happening, and Larry, I want you doing your best work. You are amazing at what you do. And I don't want you to think that, in any way, I don't think you are. I just don't see how you guys are, you know, can keep up. And what I would like to see is these campgrounds, we need to start charging. How do we do that? The Cobarton boat launch, we need to start charging. How do we do that? There is, there's policy that needs to be written. There's ordinances that need to be written around all of this.
Hey, so right now, we're writing ordinances right now. Sen and I have been working on it. You guys, we've discussed that in the past, to get those. And we are charging at Cobarton, we are charging at Wellington. Wellington, we're receiving a lot of money on...
Well, we're receiving donations at Cobarton.
Donations. And the one that concerns me more than anything right now is Cobarton with the outfitters, because I've been, I've been looked in the face and told, no, I don't have to. And we've got a lot of new outfitters down there. As far as growing the program, I mean, I can handle the Forest Service and IDL and all that stuff. I think the question in my mind's eye is going to come up, if we're going to spend money, I can't keep asking the clubs to do the matches on grants. If we're going to spend sixty, seventy thousand dollars on another employee, I'd rather that went into a pocket of funds so that when we apply for, whether it be Boulder, whether it be Little Payette Lake, whether it be toilets, or there's some property that I'm looking at right now that we'd have to talk in executive session about, I'm going to need the match for that. And we don't have that anywhere in the budgets. We don't have that. I can't keep going to the clubs. I mean, every match that we've got, all of our parks, all of our equipment is all comes from the snowmobile clubs. They've donated match money. We just can't do that. So if you've got extra money that this year you want to spend on an employee, on, other than Danny, on another employee, I would prefer it went into a pocket of funds so that we can get the Little Payette campground going, get all of our stuff, because we're going to need match money.
So did you put that in your budget? That's your responsibility to do that.
I did not put it in the budget, because right now, those aren't projects, those aren't existing projects, those are future projects. Both the property purchase and the Little Payette thing just came up lately, so it is, I have not put them, but of course, not, also, another employee is not in the budget either. So if you're going to consider doing that, I'd prefer you kind of turn the page on that, so that we can build it out before we start adding more people. I hate to put the burden on the county, to be honest with you, the taxpayers, they've got a big and a burden on their hands right now, especially with inflation.
And I think that's always been kind of our philosophy since we hired Larry to be the groomer advisor, was that everything has got to kind of pay for itself as it goes.
And we can do that, and I'm turning, slowly turning more stuff over to Danny. Danny's, the one skill set that is the most difficult, in my opinion, is that personality of being able to go out and meet the public and talk to the public and listen and take time and always be happy and always promote the county. Whether we, whether we agree with the decisions or we don't agree with the decisions, we always promote the county and support the county.
And that's what you're fabulous at.
Well, we all need every employee in the county. We're a team, and I believe in teams. It's like Sunday, you know, we, and I've discussed quite a bit about employees and how to deal with them. So Sunday, we had our groomer appreciation barbecue out at Warm Lake. I had all of our groomers out there except one. And it's so nice. I don't have to worry about people coming back, because we're constantly saying thank you. We're constantly appreciating them, and they like that. It's all about a team. The whole county is one big team.
And that's what you're so good at. So what I'm saying and what I'm asking for is, I still don't feel comfortable with our policies and procedures. I still don't feel comfortable with waivers for employees that are getting on those pieces of equipment and signing off liabilities and signing off on the fact that they have been fully trained on a piece of equipment. You are so good in front of people. Your skill set is not as strong when it comes to writing an ordinance, writing those pieces of, of all of our policies that we need to make sure that we're protecting the county.
So is that a position for an executive or is that a person for a secretary that has that skill set? If I had four, or say ten hours a week from somebody that could take what I put down on paper and put down into that pretty piece of paper that we would put into records, that would solve that issue. And I've talked to Pat about that, too.
I don't know that you're going to get the level of skills required to do that type of work out of an administrative assistant, but...
I know somebody that would do it and has volunteered to do it, and I won't let them do it because they volunteer too much as it is. That's, got to take care of all volunteers, too.
The whole county, if you think about it, Larry, is ran by volunteers. There's a lot of people.
It's actually, it's humbling. It truly is. There are times, like I'm out there and there's people showing up. I don't remember their names, and they're coming up and saying, thank you, we really appreciate it, and it's just, it is very humbling how the volunteers in this county, incredible people.
We couldn't do anything without volunteers in this county.
No, as I say, I think, you know, part of the conversation is, is we're just seeing explosion of recreation in the county. We're seeing an explosion of need and demand for campgrounds. You know, the state parks are full. Non-developed sites are getting overrun, they're getting abused, and we're not seeing any mechanism in place from IDL or the Forest Service to be able to go out and help with those spots.
I agree.
So I mean, I think, you know, part of the question that we were discussing was, what's our vision moving forward? I mean, we can't just be looking at like next year. We have to be looking two years down the road.
Ten years down the road.
We need to be looking five, 10 years down the road.
And if you'll wait till our coaching session, which is, that's considered an executive session, I can share some things that I'd rather not share publicly right now.
And it's the coordination, too. You are fabulous with the snowmobile groomers and taking care of our assets in the summertime. But there is Citra, Simba, Whitewater's. You know, we're not covering all those bases. We need a coordinated effort in the county to try and cover...
Well, I, you know, I'd even take it a step further is to bring up the horrible idea of the recreational access levy that's been discussed and blown out of proportion for the last few weeks. But the idea is, is that we're losing access to a lot of the stuff that's in the valley floor. We're losing access to parking lots. And I know that we've talked about it with you, but I think like my fear is, is that we're putting this on the back burner continuously. And I don't know if that's you taking care of your policy and procedures, or you making sure that the bathrooms are getting cleaned at different places. But those are the types of things that I see as like an immediate need, Larry. And that's one of the reasons that I would be, you know, more of an advocate for like looking at what we need to do so that we're considering our future and we're considering these projects that are immediate and helping you with, you know, projects that you're working on and then expanding that to projects that we need to be working on.
So I don't agree with you that we're not working on those things, because there's a lot of things. I don't come in here and take your, you guys' time, because you've got more important things, but I work with, right now, I'm working on around that, around the mountain bike loop that...
Larry, let's not use that as an example. Let's not use that as an example. That just came up.
Yeah, it is, and I've been talking to, it is a good example.
I disagree, but my point is, is so, let's talk about...
I do work with the Whitewater Association.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot going on, is what we're trying to say.
And probably the most difficult, I'm frustrated right now because I just read that South Fork decision. Have you guys read that, the Forest Service?
I haven't seen it.
UTV, ATV?
Yeah, that's after eight and a half years in our lawsuit, and we basically got absolutely nothing out of it.
Right.
And it's, there's going to be some lawsuits over, it's not going to come from any of the groups that I'm involved in. But it's, we got shut down on that, and we're getting shut down on the McCall district. Everything we've worked on, the new Meadows district, that ranger's going away. Jake's going away for a while, so everything's coming to a stop again. As far as IDL and their leases, I talk to Scott every other day about those leases, and it just, you know, it isn't getting done. He always says it's sitting at the AG's office, so...
And that's, that's my concern, and I think our concern is that...
Those are the things that have us on hold. Those are the things that until we get decisions from IDL, we get decisions out of the forest, we've got plans. I mean, we've got that Clear Creek campground that is a huge project, and Dave's project of Little Payette Lake, I think would be an extremely good one. It's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of matches to get the grants, but that's what I'm trying to say. You asked me what I think we need as tools? I've told you, we need to have the funds for a match, and I need Danny full-time, and then we can look at it again next year and see the next step. I don't have, my ego is not at play in this thing. What's at play is that I want to see this continue once I do leave in twenty or thirty years, and...
Well, and that's, that's what my largest concern is, Larry, is if we, if we use your skills where you're, where you are so important to the county, and that is the connection points, you know, talking with some of the large landowners, working with Forest Service. I, how in the world are we ever, I mean, Danny can't run all over this county and do all of the work either.
Well, that's one of the things I fear, too, is if we do talk about expanding campgrounds and trailhead facilities and depending on what happens up in the northern half of the valley, we may end up with a large amount of stuff. And I mean, right now, you guys have like four bathrooms that you're cleaning on a regular basis, and we've got, you know, potential, after our conversation with IDL, they said they would love to have us take over all their non-developed campgrounds. Anybody take over all their non-developed campgrounds? If we took over a portion of some of those areas, we're going to be responsible for more ground than we can cover, certainly than two people can cover in your department.
Sure, and every bit of that is absolutely the truth, but we've just got to get to that point where they say, because right now, we're not going to take over anything. I'm even talking to both the Boise and the Payette about taking over a couple of their facilities, but they have to pay us to take, and trust me, their budgets are way bigger than ours on those facilities, that we would take over some of those. So once we build it out a little bit larger, then we can start looking at another person. But until that happens, I, it's you guys' decision. It's a financial, in my mind's eye, because I look at finances all the time, it's a financial decision. Do we add another person for sixty, seventy? I don't know what the county's burden is on payroll, but it may be eighty thousand dollars. Or do we put those funds in so we have a match, so we can get all those things, the Boulder campground, the Little Payette Lake campground, all that stuff? Those are your decisions to make. All I can do is recommend.
And I think it's really important for us to ask ourselves, really, what is this person going to do? Is he going to go to the Forest Service? Is he going to go to the state? Is he going to go to these different other entities and beg and plead? Well, we have been doing that on the coalitions for years and years. I guess what I'm saying is I think a lot of what you guys are expecting Larry to do is our job. We should be the ones going to these meetings. We should be the ones talking to IDL and the Forest Service and trying to encourage some of that as commissioners. That's, I've been doing it since day one and...
Yeah, I was saying, I think we are doing that part of it. What I'm just wondering is, you know, like I guess I'd ask Larry, since you're the person most familiar with the program, is if you were looking at an expansion of the program in the next year, five years, what would your ideal scenario look like for staffing? And how would that...
Like everything else.
How would that department be structured based on, we sent you an org charts example of some of the things we were talking about? So thinking about, you know, where do you see the need and what do you see the jobs needed to perform to meet that need?
And how would you recreate the funding structure to support that?
That's, the whole key to this thing is the funding structure. Right now, it seems, and I may not be wrong, because I don't have privy to the funds that are, that come into the county. But right now, we have an economic base where we're receiving a lot of funds, and like some of us people that have been around and lived through the Jimmy Carter days, those funds could be gone tomorrow. And so do we build, we got to be really careful that we don't build something that's temporary, because remember, you guys aren't going to be here forever. There'll be other commissioners making other decisions. And unless we, we make this thing financially independent, where it can take care of itself, it could just all go away in two years or four years. So that, my mind's eye, I'm looking at ten years. I'm always looking at ten years out, and I wish I could get the Forest Service to look at ten years out, and they just, it just isn't happening. IDL, I think, is starting to look at ten years out. They hired Todd Wernix, who's doing an incredible job, but he's up north more than any place else right now. I've actually talked to him this morning, and I want him to spend some more time in Valley County, looking at some new projects, and he's going to. I see, where I see us is, this year, I see us applying for grants and trying to get things done, getting our IDL lease done so that we can look at the Little Payette Lake. Finish the grant process for Clear Creek campground. In five years, oh my gosh. If we can put the, our two campgrounds now, the Wellington one's going to bring in, I think, close to nine to ten thousand dollars this year, and that's on donations. So we need to get the, we need to get our ordinances done. We need to get our fees done by resolution after the ordinances are in place. So this is going to take some time. If we can get everything done by next year, then I think we can look at it again and make a decision, because it's always going to be on the nature of the beast, which is money. And that's you guys' decisions.
Where are you at on taking care of the assets in Wellington? Where are you at on getting the roof fixed and...
Mary is looking, she's applying for two more. I got a new bid on it. Oh my gosh. So we went from thirty-seven thousand dollars to fix it to almost fifty thousand dollars to do that. She's applying for two more grants. I've asked that club to come up with some more money for it and do some in-kind, because they've got some contractors. As, if you've worked with IDPR grants, a lot of grants don't let us do in-kind at full value. Like if I use my time as full, as in-kind, it's ten dollars an hour. If it's a federal person using in-kind, it's full. So it's kind of, it makes it a little difficult. But we're working on all those things, all of our facilities, and we'll be going over some of that this evening when we do the coaching session.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if, did you follow up on the question that I asked you, just as far as like what would your organizational structure look like for the department?
In five years?
Well, let's talk about next year first.
With Danny full-time and look at possibility of another person that just works on, that starts learning how to work on land issues. A lot of, like I think Commissioner Hasbrook was saying, a lot of this stuff that goes on in this department is basically based on relationships. And we have to be very careful how we deal with both IDL and the Forest Service and not burn any bridges, because it can happen just like that. Then it takes years to build that back up, and that's what I would need to do, is train somebody to help us with that. Now, we did get some help from IDPR. They hired a full-time collaboration person, and I'm working with them, trying to get them up to speed on both the BFC and the PFC. And they're going to join the Little Salmon River Collaborative, too. That's what I would see. I, Danny and I this year, if everything goes good, everything keeps rolling, we bring in another person next year that I can work with on training them on all the land issues.
And that's my question for you, Larry. That's, I don't know what, I don't... Training people on your knowledge base is what's going to take some time and build those relationships. So that's, that's kind of what I'm looking for, too. I don't know that Danny is that person or not, but we've got to figure out, your department is a two-man team right now, and if something happens to one of you, you know, the county's really going to be in a struggle.
Yeah, I don't consider us a two-man team. I think we're like a hundred people right now, but yeah, as far as paying salaries, we're a two-man team. And yeah, that is the biggest structure. Like I said, one thing about Danny is, is he does have that skillset of, of being positive with the people. And, and we'd have to look very carefully to find that, cause it's hard to find people that will answer the phone on a Saturday or Sunday. You know, they just don't get that anymore, that that's all part of that relationship. I got called Saturday from both the LEO and the District Ranger for McCall District. And I'm more than happy to talk to anybody anytime to keep this thing rolling.
Larry, if we go to full-time fees like at Cabarton and Wellington, you're gonna need somebody to be there on Saturdays. And so, I'm assuming that you're probably looking at another part-time person by this time next year.
So, I, I, we've done two things. Danny's gonna work weekends if he goes full-time. So, that'll give me that break on the weekends to do some other stuff. Plus, and I haven't really talked to you about that, I've talked to IDPR and I've talked to IDL and the Forest Service about, they apply for grants for what they call Snow Rangers. I'm thinking about applying for a grant for two people to work our parking lots year, year round, you know? Let's try it one year, get a grant for it, don't, don't use it out of our budget money. Get a grant for it and see how that works. Cause the first year, once we pass our ordinance and fees, the first year's gonna be the toughest year. That's the educational year. And so, I'm, we're already talking about a grant to do that.
So, then, then you can kinda learn what it's gonna take to, what kinda income comes in from this person and what it's gonna take to pay him?
Yes.
And what kinda personality you need to have there. But I think eventually down the road, what I don't wanna see is you guys standing there trying to make people pay fees when you have a million other things that you could be doing as far as other parks or other.
We have done that, I will tell you, I've spent a lot of time trying to educate. But yeah, you're absolutely right, that'd be the very first year. That's why I wouldn't wanna hire somebody and say, hey, here you, here you go, you got a full-time job.
Go out and be a.
Go out and do this. It'd be better for us to get a grant, get some, some young kids, some part-time kids. Train them on the information, train them how to turn around and walk away and give them sheriff's phone number, give them the sheriff's phone number and we're good to go.
You're not gonna get kids to do that kinda work the first year. That's gonna take somebody that's.
I've actually talked to a couple of young guy, people that, in fact, one young person is planning on going to the Air Force Academy once they're out, out of, out of high school, they're sophomore in high school right now and they wanna work in recreation. But this person wants to build their resume, which man, I haven't talked to somebody like that in a long time. It's really awesome. But there's young people out there that wanna do this stuff. They wanna start building a resume with recreational work. So, I'm, I'm not as worried about that as I would've been last year.
And I feel like our largest opportunity to increase income is our recreation.
Absolutely.
We've got to wrap our arms around what this looks like right now. I feel like we are way behind the eight ball because of, I mean, the Wilks, the Wilk sale. We should've had recreation easements in place. We should've had, you know, I mean, we're.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're, we're behind in looking at our county's footprint as a whole and saying, this is our future and this is how we're going to get there. And I have been here for two years now, alls I've done is plan for our future. And I am most concerned with the fact that we don't have a good, solid plan for our recreation programs. Because right now it's just happening to us. It's not with us, it's just people are coming to the county. They don't know, you know, we're not, we're not giving them enough information to tell them to, you know, these campgrounds are available all over the place, you know? What, what is our communication with the public? Right now, people are so frustrated Larry, and I know that you know that, but I, I talk to people, that's the biggest frustration. These people are just everywhere. And, and we have to be able to manage that going forward some way. Some way, we've gotta create a recreation program that's vibrant and strong. It can't just be snowmobiling, it's gotta be biking, it's gotta be hiking, it's gotta be, you know, the trail work. The, it's, it's a coordinator that I'm looking toward. Somebody to coordinate all of this work.
I think too, Sherri, you need to think about your philosophy of, you know, people that are out in the Forest Service room, IDL in and they're camping everywhere and, and people are complaining, that's really not our issue. That's the Forest Service issue and the Forest Service is, I think, has to step up and say, okay, we need to do some campgrounds, we need to do some LEOs to enforce the rules. And that, to, to throw that back on Valley County is our responsibility or back on Larry, I think is a little unfair.
I agree 100%.
And I think our recreation is extremely robust. We have overuse basically of everything.
And the frustrating part, when you talk about easements, I, I think I was really the first one that really started pushing the easement back when Southern Pine Timber bought stuff. And, and to be fair, Boise Cascade offered all those easements to Valley County at one time 25 years ago.
What a tragedy.
I, I, the easement stuff on, on private property really has to take place on a different discussion because we've been offered those easements and the communication just stopped. And I've tried to put everybody together a number of times. I think we need to find a way to move it forward. Easement is frustrating. The other thing that is tough about Valley County, if you go to, especially the Oregon forests and some of the Washington forests, the signage is incredible. You go up on this mountain and you'll find signs of the porcupines, it's completely, you don't know what, what that junction is, where it goes, where it does. And we talk to them about it every single time we have a meeting.
What makes it different there? Cause it's still Forest Service, so what is the difference between how they're accomplishing that?
It's leadership, 100% leadership. I mean, I, I finally got back on the BFC and then we've got that one project going. There isn't a bit of recreation. And so, I have asked and I've, I've gotten kinda beat up. I say, well, fine, we've got a CE to take care of this, this bug kill area. Let's replace the junction markers while we're there. Let's replace some of those porcupine eating signs. Nope.
And I think those are kinda the issues that we as commissioners need to take on. It needs to come from somebody with a little higher authority, I don't, and we have tried. I mean, look what we did out at Sage Hen.
Yeah.
And that's coming around, but it's taken a long time to get any kinda movement on the Forest Service's side.
I was gonna say, the funds from the Great American Outdoors Act money right now that are coming into the forest, they prioritize like signage, facilities improvements, you know, for outdated, for maintenance facilities. I mean, those are things that are now being prioritized here locally that they didn't have funding for, wasn't prior, the funding wasn't prioritized in the past.
And, and we have seen that in the past where they said they were going to.
Yeah, as I say, circling back around to like the example of like some of the Oregon counties, you've got like Douglas County, which is a huge county.
Yes.
It has coast, it has mountains and everything in between. And they have, I don't remember how many campgrounds they run, 26 campgrounds that they run at a breakeven plus paying for all their costs. They don't take any money out of their taxpayer budget to fund those campgrounds. They provide trailhead facilities, you know, and so that, I, I see that as like a shining example. I mean, they have visitation that's above what we're seeing here right now. But they were in a position 15, 20 years ago to address that and say, hey, this is a priority that we wanna make right now. So, I mean, I guess it all comes back to my perception is, is that we need to prioritize it. Some of it is the responsibility of the agencies that we work with. Some of it's gonna fall on our shoulders to take care of it.
Yeah, I, I, and as far as the agencies, I think it's our responsibility just to keep nudging them in the direction we want them to go in. And that's part of that relationship thing. The other thing with signage, let's, let's face it, right now, we don't even have a travel plan on both the Boise and the Payette after the lawsuit from Winter Wildlands, they threw the, the travel management plan out. And so, every time, like with Lost Creek, Boulder Creek, every time you put any recreation into any plan, it gets sued. And it stops the Forest Service ability to bring the forest back to where it used to be and make it healthy again. So, that, that, you know, on, on their behalf, I have to say that I think they're trying, but they get stopped. Now, we've got, they're using that category exclusion a lot more and I'm asking them to use that on a couple of things, including that, that trail up on the McCall District for that around the lake trail. And Jenny said she thinks she could do that, but.
So Larry, my question to you and, and, you know, I know that you're covering a lot of this type of work, Elton saying it's the responsibility of the commissioners. I don't know what I don't know. So, when you need us, you know, you've got to come to us and say, I need your support on this, you need to come with me, yada, yada. Cause I don't.
And we've done that in the past, like when, on the signage deal, I think one year he came to us and, and we all wrote a letter and signed it as commissioners, sent it to both Boise and Payette, asking for more signage, more recreational signage, trying to influence that leadership. But what's really disturbing to me is you go back over to Caribou Targhee and that forest and Pay Horse and that area and it's phenomenal, the signage and the recreation they've done in Idaho and in other forests. And it's, it's all, it's all the local leadership, I think, that determines the success or failure of some of these programs. And there are some that just don't wanna work, they just don't wanna do it and you have to live through that.
Yeah, we've really tried hard. We've even said, I, I'll get some volunteers to help you guys, because they have, the Payette and, and the Boise have these rules about what these signs have to look like. They have to be brown, they have to be sat over here where you really can't see them or, cause they just don't fit in. And we've asked, we've asked for junction markers that you can read, that you can slide up and down from winter to summer. We've, we've designed them, we sent them that other forests are using and it goes to Boise to their engineer and that's the last we hear about it. But we'll just keep pushing. I, I think of constant pressure, constant attention will give us solutions.
I think that, I think that's true also, you know? I mean, and that's, and who's responsible for that constant pressure, you know?
Well, I'll do it whether I'm working here or not, I'll constantly stay on top of that, cause that's a, that's gonna take, that's what's gonna take care of the people in Valley County, to be honest with you. I hate to put anything, any burden on our taxpayers if, if we can get to it a different way.
Here a couple of months ago in the Boise Forest Coalition, we were all so exasperated by the fact that part of the funds from some of these logging jobs were supposed to go to campground improvements and signage and all that stuff and nothing was happening. And so, the steering committee of the whole coalition wrote the regional forester that we do not like what's going on. We want you to come down on some of these people here because they're not doing what they said they were supposed to do. So, that's how we fight it as a group. Everybody signs a letter and hopefully you can change minds, but.
Commissioner, I appreciate that so much. One thing, I even brought it up in the PFC last week and Commissioner Mop, and I know that Commissioner Bingaman knows, but those stewardship funds, those really belong to the county. Those funds are the retained earnings from logging projects that belong to the county for schools and roads. And they changed the name of it, they changed it to stewardship. They're doing the same thing so that they could keep the retained receipts. And, and I understand some of it was to stop lawsuits. But we should have a say where those funds go. I just got the list of what they're doing on the Payette and it's really disappointing. It's the same list that we got four years ago that they were gonna do on the Payette. Plus, they're also have salaries and stuff in it and it just, it's frustrating.
Well, and I think, you know, in talking with other commissioners from other areas, they actually like have a point person that works with each one of the forests and that's what they're doing all the time. They're constantly watching what's happening and occurring and calling them out on it and holding them accountable. And that's something that, you know, that's the other part of this position is, is having somebody, and it's not that you don't have authority, cause you have great relationships with them, but sometimes having a commissioner behind it or having all three of our names on stuff.
Yep.
You know, make a difference.
I think it's all three of you, that's, that's what'll make a difference, cause they, they.
Then we need letters to sign.
Okay.
We need, you know, we need from you, you know, this is the support I need to make this happen. Because right now, I feel like we're treading water or going backwards on all of this. And if, if that's true, then let's work past the, you know, the local forester and, and whatever we have to do. But we, we are responsible for pushing our own.
Absolutely.
Future.
And Commissioner Mop, and I appreciate that, but keep in mind, a lot of this was done before you were a commissioner too. And even before the last commissioner.
That's why I say, we're behind the eight ball.
Kinda, yeah.
I understand that.
And sometimes I think they like that because new commissioners, ah, we can start over again, you know?
Absolutely.
It drives them crazy.
And that's why we need some things in ordinance. We need some things that doesn't change with.
I'll, I'll get you a letter a week.
That's great.
It'd be kinda fun to actually to, to deliver it. I do work with Ron Hamilton from Adams County quite a bit because those are the two counties that affect us more than anything. That's become kind of a veteran community to McCall, they don't like to hear that, but it has. And what happens in Adams County really affects us quite a bit anymore, especially on the Payette, cause the Payette is paying more attention to that than over here. But.
So, and I was gonna say, circling back around, I think, you know, you've got a great understanding of the big picture items and I mean, you've done a great job working with the coalitions. I think that, you know, following up on what Elton said is that we do need to be maybe at that level, getting more involved, the commissioners getting more involved and letting you step back a little bit and, you know, say, hey, I need some help over here, but refocus on, on sort of the inner workings of the county. And I, I would just say, so like maybe one suggestion and I, you know, it comes from some of the stuff that I've been working on, especially with the Land Trust and the Riverwalk Group, is that, you know, over the next year, I'd really like to task you with looking more inward, rather than expanding out onto the forests and the federal agencies. Is let's look at the valley floor, let's look at how we can improve our recreation infrastructure along the river corridor, the pathways, the connections that we started talking about with the National Park Service grant that you're a part of. The planning process is let's start looking at what are our needs closer in? I mean, we can fight about shared stewardship funding, but that's, in my mind, I think that's taking a lot of our time and energy away from us.
Yeah.
And I think what we need to be concentrating on is like, how do we move forward on some campground opportunities? How do we improve the parking, you know, at Hat Ranch? How do we improve our relationship with the BLM and the BOR along the river corridor?
So, the, just so we're all clear, I got involved with the collaborations because to be a member, a voting member, you have to show up a certain percentage of time. And the commissioners were struggling with that because there's so many other things they had to do. They'd be called away on something else. So, and, and it doesn't really take much time for me. I, I, I do it, they know me now, I'm involved, I've been on the steering committee for the PFC. You gotta be there all the time. I like the idea of giving you guys that information, putting the letter together and letting you be the hammer. And I think that's a great idea. You just gotta be there all the time.
I wasn't suggesting that you retract from, like I said, I just.
Yeah, no, I get that.
It's a, it's a matter of like time spent doing each kinda segment of work. You know, and I just think that one of the priorities that we need to set for our recreation department is focusing on the things that we can change. It's like the A motto, you know, give me the ability to change the things that I can. We're never gonna change all of the things that we need to change about the Forest Service and IDL.
We will.
But we do have the opportunity, we do have the opportunity to do some things in the valley floor.
We've actually hired, we're, haven't hired, I apologize for that word, we're in negotiation. Do you remember Tedwell?
Wayne?
Wayne Tedwell, he was the forester for this whole area. He is consulting with us now on some of the stuff that we're being told no.
So, I keep being confused on who's we? Are you representing Valley County or are you representing the snowmobile community?
I'm representing, it has nothing to do with the snowmobile community. I represent Valley County, that is the IRC. What I do is facilitate. I pick people in touch with each other so that we can get the proper information and get things done. I represent Valley County, period.
And I'm really excited to have somebody of the caliber of Wayne Tedwell.
Oh my, we were shocked.
On our side, because this guy has, has had a lot of pull in the Forest Service for years.
You're talking about Tom Tedwell, Forest Service X, Forest Service Chief?
Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
Oh, yeah.
And I think down the road and he, and it's some time, give him some time to work into the system, but he's gonna come back and know the insides on a lot of this stuff.
He's already shared some things that.
But I, I do agree with Dave that I think we need to spend more energy on valley floor stuff, immediate impact. You know, Cabarton, maybe another slide, Clear Creek, some of the stuff up around Little Lake, some of that that's right here, local and close, we have pretty good control over and let's get those things.
We're a hundred percent, we just need to get our leases signed. Please Lord.
Do we need to do anything with that? I mean.
It's up to the AG's office. I, I saw that we put together recommendations of what we wanted to see on it and I was told, I think you guys all saw those and I was told that everything we wanted will be on there. And it came back from the AG's office with some highlighted stuff. And everything that had to do with the highlighted stuff had to do with us passing our ordinances and have resolutions on fees. And so, they went through that and they have now sent it back to the AG's office. And then, once we get it and sign it, then we, that's why Cindy is helping me work on the ordinances right now. Once we have the ordinances done, we have the signed copy, then we do the resolutions on fees. And at that point, we're go.
But they're not gonna sign our lease until we get an ordinance and the fee structure in place?
No, they, we'll get the lease signed before we get the, there's no reason for us to put an ordinance through unless we have that permission to do that. We'll get the lease, it'd be lease, ordinance, fees.
So does Oak need to contact the AG's office at all?
He can, he knows. Gosh, they all disappear on me.
Oh, we're running out of time.
Yeah, I know.
I was gonna say, one of the things that we haven't.
Mr. Chairman, the commissioners, my apologies. My understanding is that there were no bids received. So if the commissioners want to continue this discussion, they can.
Unfortunately. Yeah, it's at the AG's office and Scott seemed to think we were going to get it back quickly, but I've heard that in the past. I would love anybody to call and motivate the AG's office on it.
At least, I mean, you know, we don't want to feel like, or we don't want Scott to feel like we're pushing around him. But I mean, if Brian can answer any questions for them or, you know, help in any way.
Well, as soon as we get it back, I'll email, I'm going to email to Brian anyway because we got to have him take a really good look at it. And hopefully by then we'll have the ordinance written by, written by that time so that we're ready just to.
Cindy is really busy right now also.
I know she is. She asked me for a list of things I wanted to see on it. So I kind of put together an outline. And now I think she was working on it a little bit this morning and we're just working back and forth and we have time on it.
And Cindy loves doing that stuff.
I know she does. She's darn good at it too.
That's her favorite thing.
Yeah.
As I say, the other thing that we haven't really talked about is like with the idea of the reorganization. But it fits into the conversation is the fact that we did send a request IDL for, to work with them on a year round lease above and beyond the snowmobile grooming or that parcel H and G that are over on the east side of Payette Lake. So a lot of the stuff that we're talking about right now with them is contingent upon this first lease for the snowmobile grooming getting signed. But if we just do end up moving forward with some sort of a lease, getting approved for some sort of a lease when they make their decision about the pit endowment land.
Well, you're thinking we could lease G and H and maybe build.
That's the request that we sent to them.
That's an awesome idea.
That's exactly the request we sent to them. I mean, it's a large request, but it was another way to make some additional funds off of those parcels that they're looking at right now.
So the good, as I remember the conversation, because this lease really isn't about snowmobiling anymore. I mean, it's part of it, but this lease is, is a year round lease. The idea was they're going to write it in such a way that we, rather than if we, if we can get that property on, on Little Payette Lake, they'll just add that to the. They'll add that to the existing lease rather than have a separate lease. And that, that's.
And that's why they want to get the first part of the lease done prior to. And, you know, at this point, we haven't even had any feedback from them, what that recreational lease would look like.
You said that was parcel E?
It's, it's, you know, the, the request was for all or part of the lands and then pit endowment land strategy.
So it's just whatever we want to pull the trigger on basically?
Or whatever they would entertain.
Awesome, man. I think that's the way to go. And it stays public access?
Well, we've looked at, you know, I get calls from IDL guys, hey, Francie Wallace parking lot is full of campers or Brush Creek is full of campers. So, you know, when you say we got four, we're actually running out there and making sure guys aren't leaving fires. We don't have any fire pits. We don't have any picnic tables. You know, we would turn those parking lots into summertime parks and.
And then we would be able to charge a fee with this lease.
Absolutely, as soon as we get that lease, yeah.
These ones to grow other areas.
Yes.
And that's, that was the question that we asked IDL when we had the meeting with them is the money that we could make if we, let's say we charge $25 a night for camping at these locations. Seems high, but if you charge $25 a night, as long as that money goes back into that lease improvement, whether it's at Brush Creek or Little Payette Lake or a trailhead facility or garbage collection, whatever it is, all of those things can be used.
Right, the conversation, and that was the main thing with the AG's office was that we can't make a profit. We don't want to make a profit off this stuff, but we want it to pay for itself. As long as we can show on a line item, and I showed them how we do our Wellington and our Cabart and how Doug's got it set up on our, on our budgets, we would build a line item for it and show money in, money out. And if all of a sudden we're making more than it's costing us, then we'll lower the cost of staying there.
Well, so in stating that Larry, so if you, if this is an income stream that can help pay for all of those facilities, pay for the employees in order to manage those facilities, so it can be self sustaining. I think that, I think this all can be self sustaining. I don't think it's going to cost us anything at the end of the day. And when we won't be making more than we would be able to use because we'll put them right back into the project. So, so.
To me, that is awesome. To me, that is a really good plan because if something happens to our economy and it tanks and we're no one and that happens, tourism goes way down. We're going to be able to survive and get through it without having to go back to the taxpayer for more funds.
Exactly.
That to me is the way to do this stuff.
And that's, that's been the goal for the last eight years is to do it that way. The struggle has always been and continues to be the land managers working with us and getting it on. It's helped me a lot having Danny this year because I've spent a lot more time dealing with IDL and the Forest Service this year. The private land issue, I think we need to have that discussion again, how we're going to move forward on that. Because the longer that we don't move forward on it, the less chance there is that we will ever move forward on it.
Right. Agreed.
We got 15 more minutes. A question that's really hard for me to ask Larry, but I really want to know just for long term, what's your plan as a person personally? Do you plan on staying in this job for five years, two years? Can you give us a rough idea of what you're thinking?
And, and it's not even that Larry. If you would answer that, if it's not full time, you know, if there's part time available for you, would you be willing to continue on with some of the really important work you're doing?
I have not considered anything but staying here and doing this until it is, nothing would break my heart worse than to leave and have this thing fall apart. That would be devastating to say the least. Right now, I'd say I'm good for another five years, maybe doing something a little different. I don't know that, but I would never leave you guys in a position unless something weird happened. But I would never leave you guys holding the bag on this thing, ever.
I appreciate your honesty.
I'd work for free if I had to. Don't repeat that, please.
See savings in the recreation department right there.
Yeah, there you go. There's, there's those matches grants, huh?
We can take our raise from his salary this year.
But I would, I would appreciate if you guys are thinking about, about that match situation. Because that's going to be what we're going to get handcuffed on, I'm afraid. Right now, I've, so the Clear Creek, what we're doing on that one, and this is the way we did Wellington. We use the property we own as the match. So once we own the property, we can revolve that to build the campground out. Now, the next ones we buy, because we don't have a bunch of grant, match money available to us, picnic tables, fire pots, all that stuff is very expensive. Running power, digging a well, putting a ball to toilet, all those things will need matches. So that's something for you guys to kind of discuss if you don't mind.
Just off the top of your head, what kind of budget are you thinking about? Fifty thousand, a hundred thousand?
Fifty's plenty. And I, and you know me, if I don't need to use it, I won't use it.
Right, I understand.
If I can find the funds other, outside of, of these funds, I would use those. And I'll always try for that first. It would be a last minute thing.
Okay, I just need to know what you're thinking. Sorry.
We have a hundred thousand in the, it's, it's in the economic development budget. Which this is economic development. So I mean, I think that there is a line item that could be utilized, but it's got, we need some grants.
Well, I think we did a half million in grants this year for you, didn't we?
We did. I don't think it was a half million, but we did a lot. It was fun year for getting grants.
We can spend that money. That's a different line item.
The RAC committee did meet and I talked to them how, what they thought of our grants that we put in and they were pretty positive. We're one of the few that aren't getting called back to clarify, so. Yeah, there'll be another RAC grant this fall. And that's the one I'm going to jump on really hard on, a piece of property we'll talk about this evening.
Hey, anything else for Larry? All right, it's been a good discussion. Use us for letters, use us to help you, you know, push some of these different agencies around and try and get them on our side.
And, and we need to have this discussion again next year about this time. And we need to look at it again. Do we need to add more? Are we bringing enough money to where we can put another guy on, you know, and do the things that you're talking about?
This conversation really needs to be in January or February so that you know how to plan a budget.
Yeah, isn't that the truth? And January and February are tough, but yeah, you're right. Just looking, looking at money, it's better for me to look around, you know, towards June. That's when you can really see the full picture and the monies that are coming in and stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I know Doug, you said that we didn't get any bids for patrol vehicles, but I would like to talk to, about it anyway. Is the issue the fact that they don't do pursuit vehicles?
Mr. Chairman, I do not know. I just received a call this morning from road director Jeff McFadden, which indicated that, or actually an email from Jeff. It indicated that the road department and my office did not receive any bids for the vehicles.
So now what's our next step, Doug? Do we just go ahead and order for, be aware of Jeff?
I would defer to our legal counsel at this point in time about what our options are.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I can look, I can look forward, further into this, but you obviously do have the option, if it's a, if it's a favorable option, to proceed under a state contract for vehicles. And that's something that maybe we'll look into first. If, if, if that's not going to be favorable, then potentially sole source contract would be an option for the county to consider as well.
If we put an RFP out, no one responds, we can move past the RFP.
You can sole source it that way. Yep.
Dave, you had your hermit?
I've been talking to their, their law enforcement, Dodge. For him, with Jeff. Mountain Home Cascade Auto did not. It is due to the fact that pricing was down. This rep was going to call all those locations.
It's not, not because we're asking for such, you know, pursuit rated and all the extra, it's just a pricing.
Those are, you know, those are being made. It's just the fact that those are pricing lists for them. No, the current one. I don't know what he's going to advise him to do, but I'm.
So Doug, should we go back out with the RFP again one more time? What do you recommend?
I mean, when, do we know when the bid specs are going to be available for dealerships or?
He didn't say that. He's given them some guidance on that.
Well, let's wait a week and talk about this again next week and get it on the agenda as an action item. And regroup, you can't, I hate to lose what we're doing for our local businesses because that's, it's just not good. And try this again and see if there's a change on both Mountain Home and Cascade Auto and some maybe other dealerships. I don't know. And you'll check into it with Kathy and all that stuff to make sure?
Yeah, I mean, she's been a good call from this rep and I'm sure.
And I still think we need to go ahead and do it and get them ordered so that the lease, you know, on their way a year and a half from now or whenever. Amazing. Okay. We have six minutes until our next agenda item. Let's, let's take a break and come back at 10:30.
Doug, we did get those four patrol items in the budget. I'm trying to think, did two of them come out of Pilt and two of them come out of the?
So for, for this year? We have, or for fiscal year 2022?
2022.
We did not budget for them. Uh, let me check, hang on.
So 2021 then would?
2021, we have two vehicles that were budgeted for. Those are the vehicles that have been received.
Okay.
So we will be paying for those once they're delivered.
Would come out of Pilt with the?
That would be a determination for the commissioners to identify how those would be budgeted. Are they, no, sorry. We did budget for these in motor pool.
And that's what I thought, because of the capital improvement plan.
We budgeted for these in motor pool. But they could be, yes, depending on what the commissioners want to do, they could be expended out of Pilt. That is an option.
But motor pool would be a 2022 budget. So they'd have to wait until October to order them? Or can we order them and then pay for them?
We could order them and then be paid for in 2022 upon delivery.
Not sure we resolved our staffing. I mean, we didn't take a vote on whether or not we're going to add full time for Danny.
We have budget coming up this afternoon.
Was that, did that get included in there this time?
I don't remember. Doug, what do we have in the rec?
We, we only have.
We didn't add that.
That's correct. It hasn't been added. And we were hoping that this would have kind of flushed it out, but we'll just continue the discussion during the budget workshop. And again, this won't be the last budget workshop that we have, but we're getting close. We'd like to get some of these flushed out before we actually publish.
Grant match funds, is that a, you know, is that just like a separate line item?
We created a separate line item for it, yes. If they are specifically for matches, yes. That's, that's how I think we should be budgeting for those.
I think so too.
If it's, you know, like a.
And then what, how do we do, so if we get the ordinance done and the fee set right away, we have fee income coming in now.
We need to create a revenue line specifically for that. Yep.
I'll let you know.
Oh, it's a mass marauder. Everybody be careful. Hi Dylan. Morning.
Cover these for anybody?
No, I don't know why they were left in here. I need to find out if they were. No, they're updates to Idaho code book. The prosecuting attorney has already received their updates. I don't know if they were supposed to be for your guys' code books or not.
Oh.
Paying in rocks or had enough?
It was, it was like the easiest flow ever. I mean, yeah, I was, I thought it was going to be a little lower and, and like going through some of the rock gardens that start popping out and like, oh, we're not even there yet. Jet boats were having a hard time. They were running up and down the river with fire guys. And I don't know if you know Heinz Sipple? He sunk one of his boats. His big boat, this last week. I haven't heard what happened. I was, we were floating down and we're like, oh my God, that's Heinz's triple.
Yeah, Heinz knows wherever the rock is in that river.
It's his backyard. He's, he told me one night he was. He's, he told me one night he was out there like driving around in the dark. You know, he came by our camp and after dusk. I saw him the next day. I was like, man, you drive around in the dark? I was like, you got some bad vision going or something? He said, no, he's like, it's like your backyard. You get up and stumble around in your backyard when you go outside at night? And I was like, no. He's like, I don't hit rocks at night.
Sorry to hear that, but, uh, that's a bad deal.
Yeah, I mean, it was all, the whole half, back half of the boat was in the water.
Do you know where?
Um, I'm trying to think if, so real close to. Let's to, uh, between Mackey Bar and that Cotton Tail.
Oh, he was up?
He was pretty low. Below Ludwig and all that stuff. Cause he leaves his big boat, you know, at the Mackey Bridge and then takes his little boat up to his house. So he, yeah, he was down somewhere, somewhere in that area around Cotton Tail Creek.
Did it rain this morning?
There's a couple of little rocks down there. There's a lot of sleepers right now. I mean, like no real sleepers.
In my house and then death.
Yeah, that, uh, I.
I got rained on. I was like, ah.
I, I don't run anything higher than 13 or lower than eight.
Right. So that's a good room, margin for error.
I'm allowed three days a year, then that's, there's.
Yeah, it didn't happen this year. I think it went from like 15 to eight.
15 to nothing?
Yeah. Yeah, it was low though.
Hey, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next item is also an action item. This is Employee Housing Policy and Idaho Power Landlord Agreement. I'm assuming this is in our packet somewhere.
It is.
I don't.
Did we get this?
Yeah, we did.
I don't know if you got the landlord agreement, because we had submitted that to the prosecuting attorney's office late or early on Thursday morning, and I don't know if he had an opportunity to review it or not.
Employee housing policy should be in there.
I don't have the Idaho Power Landlord Agreement, but isn't that just, it's an Idaho power agreement, isn't it?
It, it is, but we wanted to, and I think Chief Deputy Oki is going to be, uh, commenting on it. After Pat presents.
Well, let's do the employee housing. Pat, go ahead.
So, um, this is just the policy. This is not the lease agreement. Um, but the policy, what, what I felt like is we needed to have something in place for a policy standpoint, so that we have a guide as to who, if we have a waiting list or, um, who we're going to allow in the housing, those types of things. And so that's kind of where it came about. And then Oki will, when he creates a lease agreement, it'll be, it'll have a lot of these things in there. So he's seen the policy, so he knows what, you know, we're thinking from this standpoint. What we'll also do, based on the policies, create a matrix. So let's say we have five people that are wanting to get into one house, as it were. So we have this matrix. Are they an employee? Are there, is, are they a couple? Um, are they, what type of a position are they in? You know, if it's, obviously if it's an elected official or a director, they would, we would get, uh, probably precedence over somebody that's maybe lower level. I don't know. But those are some of the things that, that we wanted to address in here. And also what the employees are going to be responsible for. We talked about a pet deposit, you know, and whether or not pets are going to be allowed. One of the things, and then we talked about parking of boats and RVs and those type of things. And how long somebody will be allowed to stay in employee housing before they will need to be either kicked out or we'll have to look at them individually. That's really what the policy is all about.
I think we need to shift some of this general maintenance up to the employee responsibility. We don't want our people having to go out and do snow removal and care of the lawn. If an employee is going to be living in that property, I feel like they should be accountable for lawn care and snow removal.
And we can change that and certainly add that in there.
I think replacement and repair of normal wear and tear in the home would be our responsibility, but.
Because we wouldn't want that to be half, uh, done unprofessionally.
No.
Yeah, I can move lawn care and snow removal up to the employee responsibility.
What about somebody that doesn't want to irrigate the yard? It's like, we're just going to let it burn up?
Uh, they won't be able to stay in the house. It's their responsibility to take care of it and maintain it. If they can't, they're going to need to find somewhere else to go, in my opinion. I mean, I don't think it, I don't think we can have a facilities person out there, you know, taking care.
No, I'm more concerned about the pets than I am anything else, because all the rentals I've dealt with, it's always been the pets that destroyed it.
And that's why they'll have a, a separate, it even addresses that in here. A pet deposit is required in addition to the security deposit. And that's standard practice.
I would just, you know, one thing, if we don't have the, if it's not, uh, nobody's living in it at the time, then we'll have to ask for the facilities folks to go back over and take care of it anyways.
Yeah.
I almost kind of lean towards just having them take care of it. If we can fit that into their scheduling, I mean, it's county facilities.
What if we end up having another, what if we were able to buy a triplex or something like that? You know, at what point, maybe then we, we hire a landscaping, yeah, or a contractor? So this is the policy and I.
I think you.
You don't want to have to go in and change a policy, but.
No, no. And I was gonna say, I think it's really well put together. I mean, you know, obviously a couple of things that we need to work through. And, you know, I'm just suggesting that. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to employees taking care of their own property. I just, to me, it seems like we're going to have a higher quality of snow level, snow removal and things like that, if we ask the facilities folks to do it. And we're protecting our investment for, you know, like Elton said, the yard, yard care.
So what happens if there's not sprinklers there? Then, I mean, they're going to have to be there every day. I just think that's a lot of, a lot of stuff to request from our facilities people, but.
Can Scott get a chance to review this? I think we should definitely ask for his input before we try to show something.
I could see that we doing the snow removal, but I have a hard time with us doing the lawn. Especially if somebody, you know, are we going to spend any money on landscaping? Are we going to do anything more outside? I know there's that one little shed in the back that's about to fall over. I think some of that should probably be removed and.
But that would be part of the policy. Yeah, that would, it's our property.
We have the skid steer now to plow the snow, so I don't think plowing the snow is going to be that tough there, especially when it's parked next door, but.
Maybe we need to just put in here that, um, I guess this isn't stating that facilities has to do it. It's just saying we're going to take care of it. And so that's, I mean, an opportunity may come up where there are four units available. And, uh, I don't want to have a policy where it's, you know, we have to be somewhere else and taking care of stuff.
Well, and it just talks about general maintenance. I mean, if we want, uh, maybe we not worry about that being in the policy, we just take out general maintenance in the policy. And then in the lease agreement, we can address lawn care or snow removal and/or snow removal. So that could be part of the lease agreement, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in the policy. It's just that we're going to do the general maintenance on making sure that, I mean, you know, if they have an electrical problem, we probably ought to take care of that, right? So, or if, if, um, we provided an appliance and it decided that it was tired and didn't want to work anymore, we should be responsible for it, right? So maybe we just take that out, those parentheses out and just leave it at general maintenance. And then it becomes a little more generic. And then in the lease agreement, we handle what we want to do, what that we want them to do. On the other side of that is if we get a triplex, then that doesn't have to be in the lease agreement. So we can just handle it there.
Uh, do you know, because I don't know, do we mow our own lawns or is that something we contract out?
We mow them. That's one of the things Scott was doing as part of.
Okay, so then I think the lawn maintenance is all right where it is. The other question I had is electricity. Are we going to change this into that renter's name every time we get?
Well, the, the policy says that the employee will be responsible for propane, electricity and internet services. I think that we need to. It's, it's fine to allow to, to move that into their name. I mean, it happens, that's again, that's standard practice. Even if somebody's only there for two or three months, you know, we, they still have to pay their own electricity, so.
What I like about that is what you just said, they have to pay for their own electricity, so.
And then Idaho Power does have a landlord agreement where if that employee moves, it automatically reverts back to our name. And then it will revert to the next employee's name. So it never gets shut off. It just becomes our responsibility between us, so.
Perfect.
That was the Idaho Power agreement. I don't have any legal. Uh, that's just a, that's really a policy call of the. That doesn't matter. I think it's a pretty simple program and it prevents the.
Right.
With power. If the property sits there for a few months. Power bill.
When I owned rentals, that was, I didn't want somebody leaving in the middle of the night and, you know, shutting power off and having stuff become an issue. So I always had a landlord agreement. Makes sense to do that.
And on the matrix part, can, you haven't got that built yet, I take it?
No, because I really wanted to get the policy together first. So.
Well, you know, eventually we need to talk about that, because we had a situation here a while back where we had two county employees, both married to each other, not somebody else. And they both lost their house, so they both had to leave. So I think if two employees is, is higher up on the matrix than one employee, does that make sense?
And there's second, if we look at the eligibility for housing and prioritize as followed, um, current employees who lost housing through, of course, they're not, and the married couples where both people work for the county.
Maybe there's numerical matrix in some way where you, you get certain points for, you know, certain things and the highest point values come up, so it's.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think on elected officials, you have to live in the county.
Yeah. Well, with, let's, uh, let's use, um.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think elected officials would be eligible for this.
I don't think so either.
Well, if we have, like, let's say that we have an elected official that has, that's renting. And, um, I believe we have one in the county right now who is renting. Um, and they lose their house. So that's where that mindset was coming from. So they're renting, they've been looking for a house, or maybe they're building a house and it hasn't been built yet, and now they need a place to live. So.
The one you have to live in the county before you can be elected was?
I believe it's 30 days, 30 or 60 days that you have.
About six months.
That's, that's my thought. And that's the only reason I put it in there, but we certainly can take it out.
No, I, I'm just thinking.
So what I've heard so far is that I'm going to take out, um, I'll just take out the parentheses and leave it at general maintenance under Valley County be responsible for.
I like that better. And then depending on the property, it's, you know, take care of it or. I mean, because this one's so close, it might make sense for them to take care of it. But if it's not that close, then that would become a burden, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I just keep thinking, do we, do we mow like Soul Conservation District and Rose Advocates? Do we take care of all that now?
Yes.
So.
Senior Center.
Senior Center, I think you ought to just leave it the way it is. I don't know. It's not a big issue either way.
I think Scott should sign off on it before we just.
Yeah.
All right, and that's fine with me.
And I think we just leave it as general maintenance and we can do that. We can just put it in the rental agreement. But, and that way we don't have to change it. If we, if we do change it in the future, then.
Well, I'm sure we'll figure out right or wrong in a year or two after renting it out. Well, this is an action item. We'll entertain a motion to approve this.
I move to include the employee housing policy in the Idaho Power Landlord Agreement.
You want to take those parentheses out or make note of that or?
With the amendment as discussed.
Second half.
So we're taking the parentheses and all that out and approving the rest, is that correct? So it's been moved to second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. This is a lot of work, Pat. And Brian, thanks for putting all this together.
Thank you.
When are we going to go out? When are we going to put it up for rent?
I don't know.
Got to get some repairs finished, I think, still.
I think Scott was.
Update from Scott next week on it.
Yeah.
So maybe we could get him on the agenda next week to kind of let us know where we are on it. Ready to go, let's.
I already have two people on the waiting list.
Yeah.
I have some discussion also. Doug, when was I, is right now when I was going to be able to discuss the Rose Advocates?
Yeah, that can be discussed now, absolutely.
Okay. So I have a recommendation, um, for your approval that we move Rose Advocates down into one of those houses that the butlers have for sale right now and place it on our property right next to Y Cap. I will take it to City of Cascade for approval. But I think if we buy one of those units, get it hooked up and just move them down there temporarily, then, um, I talked to Casey Brock and asked if that would be something that, you know, they would look at. And she said, absolutely. I mean, if it could be for a year or two, just as a temporary place for them, a hospital is going to look at expanding within the next two years. And, you know, that would be a great location for them long term, but we'd make it pretty well known that this is a temporary location and maybe put a two-year window on it.
Well, then you're going to go into the, where they are now and remodel that?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be the next house.
That would give us another potential rental down the road.
Correct. And, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad thing for Scott to, you know, I mean, tho- those units that they have, I think are $42,000. So it's going to cost us, you know, a little bit to hook up to the city. I mean, for $50,000, I think we could have a unit on that site, at least for a couple of years. And have, and, you know, the county could use it as.
Is there a foundation required and all that?
I'm going to have to check with the Ca- City of Cascade. I didn't want to move forward at all until you guys were in agreement that that was something we wanted to move forward on.
You know me, I'm still thinking. Can they have sewer water? Power, phone?
Would they leave it fairly much intact as far as the living space and they just convert it over to office? Make the living space into the office?
Or a bedroom into their meeting room or whatever, you know?
Are these units like one bedroom or two bedroom or?
One bedroom.
I think they're one bedroom.
I guess what's rolling around in my brain is why not leave Rose Advocates there and go ahead and put it here and use it for employee housing?
I think that the Rose Advocate site could be a three bedroom.
That was only one, no, I'm thinking of the Soul Conservation building. That's really the limiting building, is that?
Yeah, the Soul Conservation is.
Yeah, that's not a great job.
It's not, but Rose Advocates really is ready to pretty much move into. And so that's.
I guess my recommendation is go to the city and find out what all it's going to cost us and figure out kind of the total. And is there a place we can go and look at these?
There's one sitting at Lake Fork right now in, uh, the old Merck site, Gemma's Deli.
There's also one sitting at the, or the flea market.
Oh, is that, that's what they are? Okay.
Perfect. Shows you how much I get south and.
Need to come south more, Dave.
I just think it might be a solution, you know, for them and would certainly be a solution to us.
I like it. I, I would really just encourage them to be more proactive than giving them a two-year option. I think is, you know, if we could say, look, this is, we guarantee it for a year, but after a year, we're going to reevaluate our needs for housing.
We'll do it as an annual renewal then and, and, uh, well, and I, I think that we need, within the next year, we need a long-term campus plan to include that, that Y Cap building.
What I keep thinking is I'd rather save the $50,000 and build us a triplex.
I would too. But it's a, it's a timing issue. So, and that unit, I mean, we potentially could put that unit somewhere else into the future and, uh.
Yeah, we could always move it back behind the UC for Scott's shop.
And we could also put it out at Gold Dust, you know, for a, another unit out there. So I think we could use that unit. That was my biggest concern is what can we use that unit for going forward? We don't want to spend money that's only for temporary nature. But I think that we could use it, especially not on a foundation, you know, for.
You know, I, I agree with, oh, I hate to keep throwing money at the problem without a big picture, but I also see it as being a, an immediate need. an immediate need, and I think that it would be a pretty wise step right now to move forward on that. So I think, like, depending what the city says and the needs for foundation, I don't think those require foundation, what I was talking to Rod about. So I'd say let's do some digging, see where we end up.
And just put them on a slab, that they call a slabbing grade or whatever?
You just, you just leave it on the wheels and basically put a skirting around it for the winter time.
Oh, okay.
Like park model style, right?
It's like a park model, then, huh? So is it, excuse me, I'm sorry, is it licensed, have a license plate on it?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that.
Because if we treat it like a park model, then I don't think you need to get the city involved.
Know the answer to that. I will do some research. So with your guys' approval, I will take that forward and try and find what the answers are, and then I'll put it back onto the, on for an action item for approval.
And then I think while, while we're at it, once we get this house remodeled over here and done, we need to have a bid on upgrading the Rose Advocates house.
And again, I don't think it's going to take that much. I don't know when the last time that you were in there.
Probably a year and a half ago.
Yeah, it's, it's in fairly good shape. I think we could use that temporarily. I think we need to figure out what we need for the next three years, because then we need a full proposal out there, a request for proposal for development of that block. Oh, by the way, I am meeting with the individual that we sent a letter to.
The coroner.
On Wednesday.
Great job.
Thanks, Sherri. That's, yeah.
Okay, I will move that forward and then come back for some decisions. And Doug, while we're talking about employee housing, we haven't seen anything come up as far as that building across the road. Do you know if that's no longer on the table for discussion?
The prosecuting attorney's office was going to, I think, continue to have discussions about that, and then if they were wanting to move it forward, I believe that the prosecuting attorney was going to communicate directly with the commissioners.
Okay. For us too. And I think we need to have a more robust discussion about this entire building and complex here before we put you guys someplace like, you know, outside of our security parameters.
Hey, we've got about eight more minutes for our next agenda item if you need a break.
Hey Doug, um, for Scott next week, so do you know in his budget, did he budget for a new office in back of the ELC?
Not that I'm aware of, not in his fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, no.
Okay, so he is planning on remaining where he is then. For longer haul, so there's no reason to put, you know, I guess until we identify exactly how many houses we have or we need for employee housing, there's no reason to move soil and water out of there and pay for something else. Do you think it would be wise to send out an employee email stating, you know, the county is identifying employee needs? And see what kind of response we get? Okay. Okay. I have been approached by somebody that has a four-plex here in Cascade with current employees living in it to potentially purchase that. So we are working toward a conversation on what the cost would be for this individual. And my question for Oak is probably, this individual is really sensitive to capital gains and would like to put something under some kind of a contract where we carried it long-term with him, but would not be a total upfront cost. And I said, I don't know what that looks like because of our indebted future councils. So I know that there'd have to be something in it to state that, you know, we were to walk away for a future council.
I think as long as you have a lease with an option to buy and a time period, you can do that. Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but just to go lease year after year after year, no, you can't do that.
We would want to look into that. I will send you an email.
After the employee say what they ended up paying for rent, they had the three hundred dollar increase, what her rent was. And then the three hundred on top of that. Gee, man. Just throw in city sewer and water and power and phone, you're probably eighteen hundred bucks a month at least. Yeah. So is there an assumed reduction in rent then? Because of his employee housing?
Uh. We talked about market.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Is there a way to adjust that for like the income?
They don't want to do that. I checked with. They had it. Then you run into issues.
Well, I was going to say, if it's a percentage lower than the current market rate, you know, I mean, it's, everybody has the opportunity to go and find something cheaper if they can't afford that. So we're giving, you know, an option out there where there wasn't one.
I am concerned about giving one employee a special benefit.
Yes.
And that's something that, you know, I mean, we really have to think that through.
One more thing that just clicked in my little brain, as far as our policy, are we going to require them to have renter insurance for their contents?
They covered that in the lease, but that's.
I think we should, and I know from my daughter's experience that, that has gotten very expensive.
I think renters.
And then Doug, do we need to create an income line for that rent to come back in?
We have one. Um, we currently have one.
Okay, so we're.
It's just a, it's a.
We can put that money back in.
Yeah.
And is that under buildings and grounds?
It would be under the general fund.
Under general fund, okay. I'm sure we'll think a few more things here before the day's over, but.
So Doug, I have a question for that on the general fund. Can we create something under facilities that is a housing fund so that those incomes can then be redistributed, you know, back to facilities?
Well, again, you, you're, I, I caution the commissioners to create revenue lines specifically for, uh, you know, individual departments unless it's required, right? So again, you, you're making the argument that if the sheriff's office brings in revenue, that revenue should then just be delegated to the sheriff's office. Since facilities is bringing in this money, we're saying now that this money should just be delegated to facilities. Again, I would caution doing that.
So I, I think there was a misunderstanding in my comment. I just want to make sure that if we are receiving income, that we're, we are putting it back into the facility because I don't think we can make a profit on it. And so it's, that's, that was, you know, my question is that that money goes back into some kind of employee housing, but I, I totally understand what you're saying. It's just identifying those receipts back into employee housing, but.
Well, I mean, what we, what the county currently has is a revenue line. It's, we've titled it rental of county property.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's, uh, that's where we receipt the money in from the city of McCall for the lease of the annex. That's would be where we receipt the money for when we do have a, a rental property. But it, it gets a little complicated then, because that money is going into the general fund. The general fund is utilized to fund buildings and grounds, right? So you could argue that yes, in fact, the money that we are receiving is going back to the general fund, but so are the tax payments that we received. So are the, um.
Well, in my mind, I'm sitting here thinking, we bought that with PILT, and I was trying to figure out a way, you know, that, that we recoup that through rent, you know, for, for our, and, and create that revolving fund that becomes a long-term housing strategy for the county, instead of just disappearing into the general fund and being spent on something else, because housing is such a need. So I don't know the way you guys feel, but I was just trying to figure out, how do we identify a revolving housing fund?
I would.
That's against your recommendation, then we will go that.
I would caution that because you're going to have a lot of the other departments saying, well, we've collected building permits. We've collected two hundred thousand dollars in building permits for this fiscal year, and we feel that that money should be directly delegated to us.
But again, the facilities department is not the one that's utilizing the housing. I mean, that's employees as a whole. So in my mind, that's, that's not the same. Um, yes, the building department makes funds, which goes into the general funding and creates that for everybody. Uh, and, and they would, you know, they would have to request it specifically, but the buildings and grounds would not be the recipient of any of those funds. It would just go back and into a housing fund, and maybe under facilities is not the right place to put it. I'm just trying to figure out what a long-term identification of some funding mechanism for employee housing or housing as a whole.
We put it in the trust?
Think about that.
Would you, uh.
I understand what you're saying, Doug. I think it's.
Again.
We can still take the money out later on.
Um.
For housing.
We're not taking that general fund though, we're taking it out of PILT, so we're never replenishing that PILT expense. It's just going directly to general line item.
So you're saying you want the rent to go back into PILT?
I'm saying that I think there needs to be identification in some way, instead of just the general fund, that we are starting a housing pool of funds to replenish and create opportunities in the future.
I, I guess that's one way to look at it. Um, I, I would, again, caution the commissioners doing that. Um, what you would be really, what you're looking at is budgeting for these type of projects. So this would just be included in your budget preparation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, when you're identifying these expenditures, right? Um, in my opinion, that's, would be worked out through the budgeting process. If you're identifying these projects, what you want to do in, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, then you would budget for that.
Oh, we can do that through the C I P also.
That's where my recommendations would be, absolutely.
Right.
Again, I don't want you to feel that I'm just putting a.
Oh, I will ask a whole question.
On what, you know, your proposal is.
No, I'm dogged when it comes to getting.
No, no worries. I, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm listening and, and hearing what your proposals are, um, and to see if we can incorporate that. I, I just don't see, uh, I, I see it a different way.
Okay.
Um, but again, we, we can continue this discussion.
Sounds good.
Okay, for good, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is a presentation from Idaho Power on their twenty twenty-one fire mitigation plan. So who do we have in the audience for this? Please come up to the mic, state your name for the record.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Dylan Martin. I am a local area advisor, energy advisor for Idaho Power, cover Valley and Adams County. I'm Angelique Root here. She's our regional manager, covers the canyon western area of our territory.
Angelique Brew?
Root.
R O O D.
Thank you, go ahead.
I've got some maps here and some information. Can I bring it up for you?
Sure. I did.
As I say, hopefully it's a little smaller than.
I started looking at it and I went out, I'm going to have to explain all this. Thank you. And Dylan has your contact information now out. I'll be the one talking.
Yep. And, uh.
Thanks for doing that.
All purposes of conversation, I've been into, I've been wanting to.
Okay. Yeah, I think I was supposed to email you back my contact, and I never did. I'm all good, thanks. I need to be all good once. Hey, go ahead.
Yep, sure.
Okay. All right, Chairman, Commissioner, thank you. We appreciate the time this morning. We're a little behind getting to you. Um, we had hoped to get to you guys before fire season began, and here we find ourselves in fire season mid-July. So, um, I'm going to give you a little bit of background information, not knowing all of what you may already be aware of, and no one expected you guys to read through that wildfire mitigation plan, but it is public, so we wanted to make sure you had a copy of it. Um, and I'll also add that we have met with, um, the majority of the cities in Valley County. We've, we've covered that piece of it already. So, um, Idaho Power, a couple of years ago, developed what we're calling a wildfire mitigation plan, largely based upon some of the activity that we saw in California. Um, you know, and in some instances, some of the large wildfires that were started in the state of California were caused allegedly at least by the, uh, utility, right? So high voltage lines, high wind, low impedance faults on high grass can cause wildfires. Um, well, we've been largely exempt from that in Idaho. We have yet to have a large wildfire caused by our, uh, apparatus or lines. We want to be prepared if that happens. So, uh, working with the both Idaho and Oregon Utility Commissions, we've developed, again, what we're calling our wildfire mitigation plan, which you now have a copy of it. Um, today, all we intend to do is talk high level about how, uh, that plan and our actions may impact, uh, really Valley County citizens and those who own property here. Um, but feel free to interrupt, and Dylan, jump in. Um, I know he's a little bit more familiar with this area than I. So in front of you, you have a map, um, and a little chart that we call an FPI. And so I'll just start explaining that. Uh, last year, Idaho Power engaged a third-party expert to evaluate our service territory. Our service territory starts in eastern Idaho and then goes through the majority of southern Idaho into eastern Oregon. Uh, the map you have in front of you, uh, covers the areas that that expert, uh, shared with Idaho Power, we have higher than normal, uh, risk in terms of wildfire. When they develop these zones, they develop them in three zones, a red zone, a yellow zone, and a green zone. Green zone means all things are great. We wouldn't anticipate any wildfire risk in those areas. Yellow zones are areas where we anticipate higher than normal wildfire risk, and red zones would be those areas that we think we have the greatest wildfire risk. When we talk about risk, we're really looking at four things. We're looking at vegetation, um, and some of that can change, right? So pine trees are one form of vegetation. That may lead us to say, yeah, there's some, some risk of ignition there, but high grass is a much greater risk for us in our type of system. So each month, we receive studies back from the state of Idaho, letting us know both the humidity, uh, the vegetation height, and how. the humidity, the vegetation height, and how dry the vegetation is. So as an example, today in Valley County, we don't have any areas that we would consider to be red-red, meaning red area, red conditions. So those conditions would be, again, grasses, humidity levels, and how dry that vegetation is. That will change this summer. I highly suspect that as we move into August, we're going to see much drier conditions in your service area than we have in the past. Just putting into context, in the Boise Valley, they are, excuse me, Boise area, the Boise Front has a lot of high grass. They're already in a red zone. So some of what I'm going to talk about is already occurring in Boise. Lucky, luckily, humidity has been higher in Valley County, and we've gotten a little bit more moisture than we have in other areas of the state. So we, we aren't at our kind of max risk in your area, but we want to talk through what that would look like. Anything you'd add to that, Dylan?
Yeah, I'd say that with the, with the mapping, when they were looking at everything, we did have, we did have to take 2010 census data, so this will be updated as we get the new census data. Most likely, things will, you know, go more yellow or red on there, and we'll all update.
There is no green. You ran out of the green color.
Yeah, green is everything else that's not red or yellow on that particular map. The other chart you have in front of you is called our Fire Protection Index. So what that essentially tells us is every day, we have meteorologists looking at our system and predicting things like wind, heat, and humidity. And so when you have these red areas, so if I were just were to take maybe this area that goes, you know, all the way around the lake, mostly all red, those are red today. However, we'd also be working with this FPI index. So if it also is incredibly hot, a lack of humidity, and high winds, then we're going to be also in a red FPI. And when we're in a red FPI, that's where things change in terms of how we operate our system. So I'll pause there and see if you have any questions about the maps or the documentation in front of you.
If it's red-red, you guys are not doing any work on the ground. Does it impact the power grid itself in any way?
It could. So let's talk about that. First and foremost, if we're in a red-red, meaning red map with red weather conditions, our FPI, the first thing we would be doing is I, I would be making a decision about what work we will or will not do in those zones. For the majority of the work we do, let's say new construction, a customer built a shop and we need to serve that with a new meter, we would not be performing that work in red-red. We would feel that the, the conditions on the ground were just too worrisome for us to be doing any non-essential work. As it relates to essential work, so one example is we have a lot of underground cable replacement projects happening in Valley County right now. That's because we have a lot of old cable that we're trying to replace with some guard on it. So we have a lot of direct buried cable that doesn't have any protection. We feel like that's important enough that we have to get those projects done in order to avoid large outages. So restoration-type work or reliability-type work, we'll be addressing on a case-by-case basis. So for example, if today were a red day in a red area, and I have crews working, which I do, they would be sending in to our company pictures of the ground conditions. They'd be reporting to us through our SGMs what the wind speeds are, and then we would make a determination about whether or not we continue that type of work. In terms of how we operate the grid, thanks for asking that question. Most people don't. There are some changes. And so I'll try to cover this high level, but if you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. If you think about overhead power lines, there are protective devices all the way across our system. And so generally speaking, in Valley County, we have our reclosures set up in such a way that if a limb hits a line, it'll test the line again, so it'll do something called a one-shot. And if that interference is still on the line, then it will de-energize automatically with the apparatus that we have on there. In a red day and a red zone, we're going to reset those reclosure settings to one-shot, meaning the first time there's any interference, power's off in that area. And that's really just to protect against high winds causing a downline and burning and starting some sort of ignition or fire. So in these red days and red zones, we will be resetting those settings, which could create more outages than your customers may be used to experiencing. But we do strongly feel like that's the right thing to do just based upon the fire risk. This is one of the driest years we've seen as a utility in terms of lack of humidity and length of some of the vegetation. So we're more concerned this year than we have, at least in the last 20 years, been around wildfires. So that's why we think it's important enough to reset those settings. Now, within these red zones, we also have other types of apparatus that we can install. And so actually, this afternoon, our line crew foreman and I are driving through your service area, looking at where we could install additional apparatus to try to keep those, those outages shorter in order not to have, you know, several hours or days worth of outages. In that case, if the power were to go out because there was interference on a line, we have guys sitting and ready to go patrol. And as soon as they patrol and find, gosh, it was just a branch in the line or a bird, we'll get power right back on. So it's always our goal to make sure that we're providing reliable service, and we intend to do that. But you do have a lot of red areas in your service area. So, you know, I would assume that this summer, as conditions get drier, we're going to see more outages affecting Valley County residents and properties. If that were to happen, we do have a communication protocol. So I believe for Valley County, you would reach out to, is it Juan that you would talk to? So, and then all of our major customers, so hospitals, cities, counties, you would be notified, likely your clerk, to say, look, we're in red conditions, red day, we had a line trip, power may be out for a little while till we can identify what the issue is.
Is there a way for, so knowing that we could have more outages, should we be communicating to our residents to sign up for an Idaho Power alert in some way?
Absolutely. We'll be doing the same. And so we have a campaign that's starting this week where we'll be reaching out to all Idaho Power customers, asking them to update their contact information with us. You know, if you've had service for 15 years, you might have had a phone number change a couple times. And so the idea is to get as accurate information as possible. And then we have three ways to communicate with those customers, and all three would happen simultaneously. We have text alerts that would go out immediately, letting customers know that they've been impacted. We would have an I V S call, a phone message that would go out, similar to reverse 911, that would notify customers that something is going on that's impacting them. And then we would also have emails that would go out to all customers who have active email addresses with us. And then, of course, we'd be using social, our website, local news media, hopefully our community partners to also get that message out.
And also, Angelique, our sheriff's in the back, and we have code RED that we could use that as well.
We've had some discussions with the cities on that. They've brought it up.
Do you also contact?
Yes, in, in this case, we would. We are what, so later this summer, within the next few weeks, we're going to start initiating workshops with our first responders, our sheriff's offices, et cetera, to talk about how they want communicated to because, you know, folks in Boise might want different communication than you want here. So that's something we'll be actively working on and inviting folks to workshops to talk through how this could look. The fortunate piece of it is, if you think about these red zones we've identified, and you look at the fire risk, the expert that we had come in and looked at our entire service territory, our highest-risk areas are 10% of California's risk areas and about 20% of Oregon's risk areas. So Idaho suited pretty well. We've done a good job with forest management. We've been benefiting from higher snowpack over the last few years. So we're in much better shape. I don't anticipate a situation in which we would have to proactively de-energize, other than short trips that occur because our reclosure settings will be more sensitive through this fire season. So I, we're, we're feel good about this. We don't think that we're going to have high risk, higher than what's indicated here. We're not in an Oregon or a California situation. But if we continue with drought years like this, it, next year could be scarier. And so that's why we wanted to have these plans in place now in order just to prevent any sort of natural disaster through a wildfire.
You talked about if a guy has a shop and he's swinging power, what about residential?
Any new business, we would likely curtail on a red day in a red zone. Customers will be notified of that. So moving forward, we wanted to get to our cities and counties first, but we'll start making all of this public. And so what will happen over the course of the next month or so is if a customer were to call in a request and say, you know, hey, I, now I have a shop, want to get it hooked up, we'll let them know that they're in a red zone and that while we'll schedule the service, maybe we schedule it 30 days out, that may change. Now, fortunately, across our service territory, even in areas that have already seen red FPIs, for example, our salmon area is incredibly dry. I don't know how the snowpack fell and why Valley County is in a different position than the salmon Chalice area, but they've already had many, many red days. They're much drier than we are. So in that case, what we would do is try to reschedule the customer either to a morning before it gets too hot where we reach a red FPI, or to a following day where perhaps there's less wind. So we're working actively with our customers to try to minimize any impact to them, but there could be impact for sure. However, like I said, they're made aware of that very early on in the process.
I'm a home builder, so therefore, we're going to get all of our power swings done immediately.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, in truth, there's some benefit to that. It is going to get drier in August, and I sit here pretty confident in June, July, that we've held it together. We haven't had any red FPI days in this area. I'm less confident about our August outlook. Now, here's the thing, though, even in salmon Chalice where they're, they're essentially a red FBI all the time, it's usually as easy as scheduling it to the next morning where it's a little bit cooler temperature, or scheduling it to the next afternoon where we're anticipating lower winds. So we're not putting customers out weeks or months. It's generally days to reschedule.
I just turned 30, so my, my red antenna went out.
Yeah, yeah. Couple other things just to be aware of as it relates to this plan, if you were to read the whole thing, which I don't expect any of you to do, there is a section on it that specifies Idaho Power is also working on what's called a public power or public safety power shut-off. All of our neighboring utilities have started developing these plans. And essentially, what those plans do is they, they develop criteria or consideration in which we would proactively de-energize lines. If you watch the news at all, you're seeing this happen in California a lot. In some cases, it's rolling blackouts because they don't have the capacity to serve their customers, but in some cases, they're killing power because of high winds and some risk on those, that apparatus to cause some sort of ignition event. Again, we don't feel like our conditions today would warrant an FPI, or an FPI that would lead to a power, a public power safety shut-off. But we are working on criteria. If we look back, looking at the criteria we're developing, even two years, there would never be a circumstance in which we'd have to enact an outage like that. Now, if things get really dry in August and we end up with a day with 70-degree wind or 70 mile-per-hour winds, that could happen in Valley County. If that were to happen, we would know days in advance. We employ very intelligent meteorologists that literally are working 24/7 around the clock, providing us with updated weather information. So if we saw a FPI red coming and high winds coming, I would get with Dylan. Dylan would reach out to all of his cities and his counties and say, look, this could happen, be prepared. At that point, we'd also be sending out some public messaging and obviously working with our first responders directly. A day before, if it still looked like we could face a power shut-off, we would again reach out and say, hey, it's, it's not looking good. At any time, though, if that wind forecast were to subside, we would obviously let you know that it's off. And then as soon as possible, either before the event or after the event, we'd be notifying all of our customers that this were occurring, so people could be prepared. One thing we do need to work with Valley County on that we don't have today, and I believe Dylan is working on actively, is we need to know what your emergency response plans are. So let's just say that there were to be a natural disaster, where do you want people to go? Is there a central location that has a generator that you're sending your vulnerable populations to? If there is, we need to know that. So that when we're utilizing our call-out information, our texts, our emails, we can tell people who perhaps are on oxygen or maybe have another medical device that they're utilizing, this is where your county suggests you go in case of a natural disaster or an emergency. I assume you guys have some plans like that. If we need to help partner working on those plans, we're happy to. But I would say now more than ever, it's, it's important for us to partner on those things.
Wondos have all that stuff.
Wondos have.
Right. Because in that case, we would want to make sure we're sharing the same message with customers. And a power safety shut-off, generally speaking, you're looking at an outage of no less than four hours. Because to turn the power back on after we shut it off, I have to send linemen out to patrol every portion of that line, and that can take a long time to do. We use drones, we use helicopters, we use foot, but in the FPI red, I can't send ATVs in there. There's not enough ground clearance, there's too much risk.
But how am I going to charge my phone?
Well, on that note, we do have a lot of, I hope you have a battery backup. Go to our website for tips on what to do.
L wants to put solar in his field. That's what he keeps telling us. He wants to turn his fields into solar farms.
We're paying $1,200 an acre per year to lease ground for solar, and that's a lot more than I can raise with cows or hay.
Yeah, you and me both. Well, so long as they commit to returning your property the way it was afterwards, not such a bad deal. We can talk offline about some stories around people who've made that choice.
I'm not sure I can get it through the conditional use permit process. I think the neighbors would kick it out.
Well, and, and, you know, it, it, solar is great if you have big battery backups. Battery backups really aren't cost-effective today. Maybe in the future they will be, but most of our customers will do, you know, a generator or some sort of short-term battery storage. Batteries are coming down in price, but solar's not that cost-effective.
Yeah, nope, nope.
If you have good meteorologists, will you please have them work with the local news stations? Sorry.
No, I get it.
Just put it out there.
Just throwing a dart at a board.
Yeah. We, we, we have some of the best, and it's because we need them. I mean, not just for things like this fire stuff, but I need to know how much water's in the reservoir, so I know if we need to generate more power at a gas plant. So they're critical to our, our team.
You guys considering expansion of any of the cloud seeding operations?
You're the second person in Valley County to ask that question. Permitting can be a pain with cloud seeding, but if you were to ask Sean Parkinson, who runs that program, he would say absolutely that we're not utilizing it enough today and that we could increase our, our snowpack and even some of our spring or early.
I was going to say, I've read some articles that that could contribute to the spring rains a little bit as well.
The colleges that we work with on those programs are highly encouraging us to consider cloud seeding in the spring and early fall because they're finding good success in other types of precipitation. So it's definitely something we're looking at. That's a program, though, that for everybody who loves it, there's equal number of people who think that it's.
It's, I was going to say, it's, yeah, it's a double-edged sword for sure, but I think it might be a larger topic in a broader scope as we push further into the future.
Well, if you think about the risks just to our communities related on, to the drought and how dry things are becoming, maybe there's a greater evil there. What can, what else can we tell you about the plan? What other questions do you have? What do you need from us as your utility partner?
I think just, you know, the, the mass alert to folks that this is coming down the road is huge. People freak out when the power goes off. I have a neighbor that's on kidney dialysis every day, and he really gets concerned when the power goes off, so. If they're, they're forewarned and they know it's coming, they can plan ahead and their little cell phone charged up and all ready to go. When I was a kid growing up here, in the wintertime, it was off for 11 days, and that was very challenging.
I, I remember even when I first moved here, if we had a winter that went by without at least like a 24-hour downtime, or the redundant line went in, it was like, no big deal.
We appreciate the power.
You know, what may I add, just on that note, one of the biggest drivers for fewer outages, we've done some Peter Hardering, we've, we've improved the system, don't get me wrong, but we have invested another $40 million the last two years in vegetation management. And there's not a time I don't come up here, drive up here, where I don't see all the big tree trimming trucks, which makes my heart very warm, because I know how important it is. Most of the out, longer outages we have are vegetation-related outages. And you can't keep trees out of lines in an area like this. This is why we all love to have, have homes here, right? But the vet, we've, another $40 million, and actually $12 million last year was allocated just to Valley County and Adams County. So we are hitting it hard to try to keep those winter-based outages short or nonexistent.
Unexistent.
But we're working really hard on it.
Busy, busy year in McCall area this year, for sure.
And he gets the double-edged sword of people not happy that we're cutting their trees, that poor Dylan, I mean, when the, when the trucks are up here, his phone doesn't ring.
So you're the guy to call when everybody's mad about cutting the limbs off.
Mad about anything, just send him to Dylan.
Not anything, yeah, there you go.
If you're happy, call me. That's great.
Customer satisfaction versus complaints.
Thanks, you guys, for coming in. We appreciate the update. Sounds like you're on top of it.
Yeah, and anything pops up, I can, you know, send me an email. I'm happy to answer those questions or call. And yeah, I'll be in touch with Juan quite a bit, I think, and just kind of figure out how best to approach anything we're doing here.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. Have a great day. Oh, you remember the name of the gal from the Go Agency? What was her name, Julia?
Jessica or Julie, let's see. I'm a bit concerned that they're not here.
She just walked in.
Yeah, she stuck her head in.
She's stuck her head in. Okay, great. Fantastic.
There she is.
Julia, come on up. You're up next.
How you guys doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Is Julie or Julia?
Julia.
Julia.
I'll respond to either, though.
It's really good to see you. There's been a lot of people going, where are they? We don't know what's going on.
I know.
Kind of fun time.
Sorry?
It's kind of a fun time right now, trying to get this going.
It is. It's a very great time. But for the most part, I did want to come and talk about the date change. I think after meeting with the city, it was the best decision to push it. That way, we can make sure all the permits are in line, everything is planned out the way it needs to be. And I just kind of wanted to get everyone's tip on that.
So I have not heard. What's the new date?
I'm looking at either August 28th or September 11th, whichever I can get. I'd prefer the August date, if that's possible. I know you had mentioned wanting to talk to the fair first.
And I did, and there's nothing going on.
Okay.
So when is, when is Labor Day?
Labor Day is the 6th.
6th of September.
Yes. So the Sunday prior.
I don't think it matters to the Fair Board either way.
That's great. That's what I need to know.
We'll tentatively shoot for the 28th.
Yes, sir. And I met with Jeff McFadden today also, and I figured out, he pointed out all the areas to leave clear, everything that needs to be done with that. So I knocked that out today, and then we're just working on getting all of our maps over to you guys. I'm redoing the permit that I submitted with all the new info, and I've talked with Forest Services about getting that new permit done.
And you have our contract?
Yes.
With all of our insurance requirements and?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great.
Have all of that, and then I think we just need to cut that check for the fair and send that over again.
Then Julia, is there a plan to fix the arena after you guys are done?
Yes. We can do a walkthrough with the Fair Board or anyone else who would like to walk through it with us, and then we can provide whatever dirt or whatever items need to be fixed or replaced. So we can walk through it before, and then we can walk through after and make that change as well, or not change, but adjustment.
Really going to be dusty, so a water.
Water tank.
Is going to be, yep.
Yes. Have that on our radar. Yeah.
Anything else? And you've been, you met with the mayor of Cascade Judy and got all that worked out with her?
Yep. From our Zoom call, I think we knocked out most of it, but we're planning on coming back again in, I think, two weeks to do another whole walkthrough with everyone, kind of get our bearings again. I have a new team with me now. So I have three people dedicated to it that'll be focused on it to make sure everything happens the way it has to happen.
What about vendors? Are you guys bringing any vendors up, or have you heard of any vendors?
We are. At this time, I think we're bringing in five vendors of our own, and then we have four free vendor spots open to any businesses in Cascade that are interested.
Good.
What about parking? Sorry.
Go ahead.
I walked through parking a little bit today with Jeff, and he kind of pointed out some good areas I could use on the property that won't block anything that needs to remain open for fire and then for them. And then he had mentioned a city-owned lot that's across from the fire department. Would that be something that I could look into?
Yeah, you go, just here above Bay Ford, you go behind it, is the ambulance and fire station, and there's a big lot. Further east there, it's a pretty good-sized lot.
Would I, who would I contact to try and get approval to use that?
Probably the mayor, city.
Just the same, okay, the same group that I've been.
And that's maybe, what, four blocks to the arena?
I think so.
Five blocks? Something like that. Not that far.
Okay. Because right now, we're still looking at that 68 number for our drivers. So it's not as big as I had planned for, which is both good and bad. But that helps us out a lot, and then with the more time, I'll be able to make sure I have enough parking for day of as well.
And I suspect you'll have more people engage, you know, between now and then, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping on. That's what we've seen with the stampedes we've been doing all year, is that the closer we get, we get a lot of day-of signups. So we always try and be prepared for that number coming in and make sure that we have everything situated for them.
And I would also work with the Legion Hall to talk to those guys, because they have a lot of parking there that's on the way in, you know, just in towards the arena.
Okay.
And then across the street, we used to have an old recycle center building there next to the pickleball.
Yes, that was the other place that Jeff had pointed out.
And that's city property as well, but there's some room there, too, that you might talk to the mayor about.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that's all I had that I wanted to update everyone on.
Good. Well, thank you for coming in and.
Yeah.
The sheriff has some questions.
Yes, I'm going to do that permit. That's the 30 days out one, correct? Yep.
Got that on my plan.
And then I'll let everyone know when I'm coming back up, in case anything comes up or any additional meetings need to happen.
If you need to get on our agenda, just get a hold of Doug, and he can, he can set that up.
Okay.
Yeah, I thank you for moving the date. I'm much more comfortable with that versus right before the fair. So I think that will be helpful for everyone.
Absolutely. We're happy to do it, because we want it to happen, and we're excited to be able to come up.
And we are, too. I know in the beginning, people were kind of going, what? But I think, you know, this is recreation, and this is what we're here for, so it's great.
I will notify the Fair Board right now, and then, and that you have the contract. I don't know if they'll require anything else from you or not, but have you, have you been in contact with them at all?
Not recently. That's what I need to do, because I need to talk to them about that check and how they want that sent out and addressed. And then I'll follow up with them on any more paperwork I need.
So you do have their contact information?
I do.
Okay.
Is it Carl Barrett's? Is that who you have?
Yes.
All right, I think we're good.
Well, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great day. Good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good one, you guys.
So that's all we have on our agenda for this morning, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn until 1 o'clock. We'll see everybody back then.